Okay. Okay, good morning, everyone. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. Before I get into my introductory remarks, I just wanted to do some introductions. My name is Stan Komorik. I will be your chair today. On my far left is Natalia Popovic. On my, on my left is, I've lost my mind. Dominic Gully, thank you, sorry. On my right is Laura Alderson, and on my far right is Bill Dalton. I'd also like to introduce our Deputy Secretary Treasurer, Barbara Bertozic, at the far-left end of the podium, and Barb's staff in front of us. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from provisions of the zoning that apply to properties, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consents to sever property to create new lots. I'd like to do a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnabi, the Chipewa, the Huhtenashni, the Windat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Our procedure this morning, the Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid and in-person virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, while others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may do so on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connected with their computer, tablet, smartphone, telephone, whatever device, and have the option to participate via video or audio only. All virtual participants will be automatically muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist. When your item is being held during this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentation materials submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Excuse me. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use Share Screen or any other panelist controls during the video appearance. Decisions of the committee, people attending in person today who wish to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, as Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, with the provincial government amendments to the Planning Act, generally, third parties are no longer allowed to appeal the committee decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons, and public bodies, as defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the committee. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. In terms of the procedure, we will call each item listed in order on the agenda. When your application, when an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant, the agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. We will comment when you're reaching the five-minute mark or at the five-minute mark. Any presentation material you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing, as staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing today. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make the presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee, as I mentioned earlier, may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. We may decide to defer the application if it is substantially revised to ensure that the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the proposed changes. Then individuals either in support or opposition to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we ask speakers in the hearing room first, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after each speaker has finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent then will be given the opportunity to rebut, but only those issues that were raised by the previous speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Okay, so now to the top of our agenda. First item is, I'd like to ask if there are any declarations of interest by staff or by committee panel members for any of the morning items. Seeing none, we'll move on to confirmation of the minutes from the previous hearing, which was August the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll move to approve those.
Thank you, Ms. Popovic. Is there a second or?
I'll second.
Chair, I'll second that.
Thank you, Dominic. I know, you guys weren't, we were, all in favor.
I had a very good excuse.
Absolutely. Thank you. The minutes are approved. And I believe we have a file for closure. Madam Secretary Treasurer?
Yes, Mr. Chair, twenty-five Westhead Road. It was previously deferred. They're asking for it to be closed, and so I need a motion to close with no refund.
Okay. Committee members, is someone ready to do that motion?
I'll bring that motion to close with no refund, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Popovic. Is there a second or?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. All in favor? Okay, that item is closed. That file is closed, sorry. I believe we have no deferrals for this morning. Thank you. So we'll be able to start at the top of the agenda, going to item one, which is nineteen Courtwright Road. This is an application to construct a one-story rear addition and a one-story addition along the west side of the existing dwelling. There are five variances being requested. And we have an agent online that did not register, so if I could get their name and address and information, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. It's Enrique Valencia from Valencia Enterprises, Inc.
Could I get your address as well, please?
At nine zero four zero Leslie Street, Unit ten, in Richmond Hill, Ontario.
Thank you, Mr. Valencia. I'm not sure if we need a full presentation on this item. I just failed to mention earlier, so I'll just mention now, there are four letters, I believe you have four letters of support. We have advisory comments from MetroLinks and Ministry of Transportation, and no comments from any departments. So if you're okay, Mr. Valencia, with us just asking you questions?
Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you. So committee members, do we have any questions for the applicant?
I have one question. I'm just, the MetroLinks advisory was a little different from what we've usually seen in the past, and I'm just wondering if you've read it.
I have, and typically I always reach out after I get the committee approval, even if it does get approved with the condition of the MetroLinks approval. But I've dealt with MetroLinks before, and I didn't really see anything that stuck out more than other applications that I've had.
Okay, no problem, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other questions, we can take it into committee for a decision then.
Chair, I just have a question with respect to conditions.
Absolutely.
Development Engineering, I believe, have two conditions in addition to numerous advisory comments. I believe there's two conditions unless I'm mistaken.
I don't see them.
Yeah, I have both advisory.
Nineteen Courtwright we're looking at?
Yeah. I don't know if Barbara can help me.
No, we don't have anything for.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, no problem. So no conditions being requested by any city departments. There are advisory comments, which we have noted. Beyond that, is anyone ready for a motion?
Sure, I'll make one. I believe the application meets the four tests and move a motion for approval, and there are no conditions.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Laura. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Valencia. Okay, moving on to item two, eleven Dunning Crescent. This is an application to permit a circular driveway. There is one variance being requested. There are ten letters of support. Transportation has provided a report and was asking for a number of conditions, which I believe have been revised to two conditions, as one of them has already been fulfilled by the applicant.
No, that was item three.
That was, okay. Sorry, wrong item, okay. All right, so our speaker here is Michael Perger, online?
Yeah, I believe that is a mistake, which I think I tried to correct with Adam to check. I'm actually for nineteen Dunning, and there was a mistake when the letter went out.
Oh. So you're not the agent for eleven Dunning?
I am not. I'm for item thirteen at nineteen Dunning.
Okay. We're having a great day this morning. So who is the agent for?
Mr. Chair, we'll look into that right now. Mr. Chair, the agent is Quteh Kim. They are listed as agent for item, oh, item three, I see what's happened. So you'll see there's a second agent on item three in our list. That should be bumped up to item two.
I actually don't, oh, I see.
Yeah.
Got it. That was a confusion on three, okay.
Okay, so we'll unmute Quteh Kim right now. Quteh Kim?
Hi, hi, good morning, Mr. Chair. Yeah, there might be a mistake, yeah.
Sorry about that multiple confusions here.
Yeah, so, yeah, my name is Quteh Kim, and then I'm the agent, and address is Unit four zero five, twenty-three forty-seven Kennedy Road in Scarborough.
Okay, thank you. Can we just get a brief overview of the application so that we're all on the same page?
Yeah, of course.
You do have ten letters of support. I think I got that right.
Yeah, yeah, from the whole community.
Okay. I, I, I think we understand what's, what's being requested, and I believe the neighbor at number nine has a similar situation to what you're proposing. So maybe if we can leave it for questions of the panel members, and I want to get into the transportation report, which I think you've addressed that issue, have you not?
Not yet, actually. We received a report like a few days ago, and then, yeah, I had a, I didn't have enough time to communicate with them, but I tried to address the, any comment from the transportation in this meeting, actually.
Okay, but just for committee members, there are item, materials in additional, in the additional materials that are, I believe, your responses to transportation questions. So I'm not sure if you need to, for members, if you need to, do you need the agent to clarify what he stated there, or?
Yeah, actually, you make mention of nine Dunning Crescent. Do you know when they got approval for their driveway?
Or did they?
That's why I'm asking.
To me, like, I have no idea like when they got the approval, but when I checked the Google Map, approximately twenty sixteen, fifteen, sixteen, yeah, there was a change. And then they have like a wider lot frontage, actually.
Right, so they, so they wouldn't have a variance because they're compliant, like in your, your client is, I believe, half a meter short.
That's right, yeah, to be exactly, a point six eight meter short, so that's why we had to come to Committee of Adjustment.
Committee, because, so the neighbor.
Still, there could be other variances that they would have needed, and that's why I'm asking, or a question to staff, is there any record of nine Dunning coming to the CVA historically? Because it hasn't been provided to us.
I don't see anything recent unless it was historic, so over twenty years ago.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Please.
Mr. Agent, I have two questions, but they're brief. The first is, can you confirm that you, your client, will consult with urban forestry, which is a transportation report reference in the August twenty-first report? Yes?
Yeah, we don't mind the, like, any consultation with urban forestry, but normally before the meeting, we have some like comments from the urban forestry, but this time, yeah, we have none, yeah, so it means that probably we have no, yeah, problem. And then, as you can see, like, there are two trees, one is city-owned, and then one is the private, and then it's very small, and then we already comply with the tree protection zone, so, yeah, I believe it would be, yeah, fine, yeah.
Thank you. And the second question is, what is the homeowner's reason for wanting or needing a circular drive?
So what he said is like, he want to drop off their children and then pick up their children, but he doesn't want to like stop on the, on the street, because the lot is on the corner, so it's, it's facilitate the, like, the traffic flow to enter in the driveway and then drop their children off, and then get out of the property smoothly.
Thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Thank you, yeah.
Number three.
Can I ask another question?
Please.
So in the additional materials that we got last night, with regards to the variances, you just simply note that it complies with five, six, nine, but I don't see any waiver or zoning review on file. So for example, in terms of front yard landscaping and soft landscaping, can you provide areas of what is there versus what's required by the bylaw?
Just hold on a second, let me pluck the drawing, yeah. So, yeah, for the soft landscaping in front yard, it's required like a sixty-four point three square meter required, and then we are proposing eighty-six point three square meter. So basically, we have no, I'm sorry, sorry, like, for the front yard landscaping is required eighty-five point seven square meter, which is sixty percent, and then we're proposing eighty-six point three square meter, which is sixty point four percent. So that's why we didn't have the zoning deficiency for the front yard landscaping. And also the soft landing, also, the minimum is seventy-five percent, whereas we propose one hundred percent.
Yeah, how can?
For the soft?
Soft, yeah.
Yeah, a hundred percent of what their landscaping will be soft, is what he's saying.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I just worry that this, you know, it seems to be number nine has the circular drive, and now we, you know, have number eleven wants a circular drive, and is this going to be, are we going to have applications en masse for circular drives on, on Dunning Crescent? And so this is, you know, to me, you know, we have to think very carefully about this because it is, there is a variance involved. It's not, it's not, you can't build it as a right, so we need to think about this.
Can I, can I answer the, like, I mean, like, all the Dunning, if, if all the Dunning Crescent property has a two driveway, so then it's going to be a problem, of course. I mean, because it's too much like a driveway access points, but you've got to consider the location of the property, which is eleven, nine, and seven, I believe, is more like corner lot, so.
Are all on the curve, yes, I get that, so the visibility is not, it's not as good, but it is not a major thoroughfare, I don't think, is it?
No.
No, it's, you know, it's a pretty quiet street, all in all. Anyway, just, those are my comments, that's all.
So any other questions? I think we can, we're started getting into the discussion now as well, but are there any other questions before we move on?
Chair, I do have a couple of questions.
Mr. Gully, please.
So you've attempted to answer the three questions that Development Engineering Transportation Section put to you. The first one relates to justification of having two driveways. In that respect, I, I believe that the justification really is required because the frontage of this property is only seventeen point three two, and the requirement is eighteen. The justification you provide to us is in terms of safety, dropping off and picking off the children at the front door. That's your justification for that. You'd rather have that safety, pick up and drop off, rather than doing it right on the road, or driving in and then backing off. Is that correct?
Yes, right. That's why we're concerned, like, if we have a single driveway, and then when the owner come to like, come to parking space and then drive back, so then they got to back up to maneuver, so it means that there's a risk, risk like for the car accident.
Yeah, so.
Since the lot is a corner lot, yeah.
Thank you. And obviously, in my view, you would not be here today on that issue if you had the eighteen, eighteen meter frontage. Your frontage is seventeen.
Because then it would, it would be as of right.
Correct.
I think that's what we need to focus on here, is the size of the variance. This is a very small variance, and the next-door neighbor already has the same situation.
So with respect to item number two, consultation with urban forestry, urban forestry has not put a condition on this application.
They've made no comment.
You'll have some discussions with them, and you still have no conditions, isn't that correct?
No condition at all, yeah.
Okay. And then with respect to item three, in your view, you're not triggering any variances with respect to landscaping, because if you are, you'll be back here asking for variance on the landscaping. So you've looked at that, and you're satisfied that providing a circular driveway will not trigger a landscaping variance. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, I try to respect all the current you are doing by law.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gully. Are we done with questions at this point? No more? So, and there are no other speakers on this item? No?
No, Mr. Chair.
So let's take it into committee for some discussion then, and/or a motion. And I just want to reiterate again that the only reason the applicant is here is because of less than one point five meters, and the next-door neighbor has the same thing. We also have community support for this. It's not like we have neighbors in opposition to it. Also want to note that this is an etobico, which does not provide on-street parking overnight, so by doing this, we're not eliminating an on-street parking spot. If there's any other comments, I'd welcome them now, or if someone's ready for a motion.
Chair, prepare to make a motion. Chair, I move that the application for variance be approved. I believe that the tests are being met. The introduction of a circular driveway will not, in my view, impeach traffic or cause any undue traffic conflicts on the public road, and move approval with no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gully.
Mr. Chair, I will second that motion and also make recognition of the community support.
Thank you, Ms. Popovic. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, that's unanimous approval. Thank you to the applicant. Okay, item three, seventy Edgecroft Road. This is an application to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are seven variances being requested. Forestry is requesting Condition one in the event of approval. Transportation also has originally three, now two, conditions in the event of approval, and there are six letters of support. The agent, now that we've clarified, I believe is Gabriel, and also online. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, committee. This is Gabriel Viducci from Geometry Design, two sixty-nine St. John's Road. I'm the agent for the owners of this application.
Okay, committee members, do we want a presentation by the agent, or are we good with just questions? We're good, okay, so if you're okay with that, Gabriel, can we just open it up to questions?
Yes, I think it's all good. I just want to make sure you mentioned the transportation. We had a pretty good conversation with them regarding their first item that was removed. I just want to make sure that that is the, the new amended memo is, will be part of our decision.
Yeah, we, we have before us a new transportation report requesting only two conditions, not three.
Correct, yes, thank you.
Okay. And we've had some discussion around that, so we're clear on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any questions from panel members? No? Okay, so if we're ready to make a decision on this, I'd welcome a motion.
Chair, chair, prepare to make a motion on this, seventy Edgecroft Road. There are indeed a number of variances, variances that relate to coverage of a size, length, depth, height, and driveway width, and setback. I believe, even though they're, they are numerous, they're all minor, and in my view, in no way impact anyone to any extent. I believe that the variances meet the four tests. The issue with respect to transportation services has been resolved with submission of a second report dated August twenty-fifth with two conditions. So moving approval of the variances requested, subject to Development Engineering Report of August fifth and Urban Forestry one.
Through August twenty-fifth?
August twenty, twenty-fifth, and Urban Forestry Condition one.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a second or?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor? Okay, unanimous approval. Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to item four. This is forty-one Kingsway Crescent, and it is an application to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. The proposed attic space will be converted to habitable space. A previous Committee of Adjustment application approved a number of variances for this site to the zoning. approved a number of variances for this site to the zoning bylaw. There are three additional variances being requested today. Um, we have comments from Ravine and Natural uh, Nat- Natural Forest Protection. Um, basically advisory comments and we have um six letters of support, um, including the two immediate neighbors. And our speaker is Alexa, Alexa, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and fellow committee members. My name is Alexa.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and fellow committee members. My name is Alexa DeCaria. I'm a planner at Design Plan Services located at eighty-seven Skyway Avenue, Suite two hundred, Toronto.
Okay, can we just get a brief overview and sort of, kind of, uh, uh, I guess, I wanna understand why uh we're referring to converting space that hasn't been built yet?
Um, so to my knowledge, the current proposal is currently under construction, um, but the additional GFA is, has not been built yet.
Okay, that's, that, that's why, okay. Just, it was a little confusing in the description, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you for that. Do you wanna kind of let us know how we got here, like why we're over? Um, was this intentional? Is this accidental? Is this like, why? Like, because you got previous approval and now you're not building to, to that approval. Um, I don't see any orders to comply, so again, how, how did you wind up here?
Um, so the previous approval did not have GFA space in the attic space and the difference between the twenty-twenty-four application and this application is that there is habitable space in the attic and that's why the GFA um has increased from the previous application.
Okay, no, we got that. Um, so a decision was made somewhere along the construction process to make that change?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any other questions? No?
Chair, are, are we in questions?
Go ahead.
Um, good morning. Um, I wanted to ask, should this gra- should this variance be granted? Uh, will it change the appearance, appearance of the original home, which was approved uh by this committee back in uh August, sorry, uh, April twenty-twenty-four? Will it change the appearance of the structure, the house, the home in any way on the exterior?
Um, so for the building footprint that was approved in twenty-twenty-four will remain the same and the appearance will remain the exact same from the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-four application. Uh, the only difference is that the attic space will be habitable space.
It doesn't change the appearance though?
It does not change the appearance.
Yeah, I, I actually wanna question that a little bit because variance two, you were asking for two platforms. Um, were, I'm assuming in the original application, you were not approved for two platforms.
No, we were not approved for two platforms. Um, the variance for the additional platform was actually missed in the twenty-twenty-four application and then was identified through the zoning review through this application.
So it was on your original drawings but not noted as a variance?
Yes, it was on the original drawings.
Okay.
And one further question on that chair. Uh, both those platforms are in the rear yard, not at the front.
Yes, both are in the rear yard. One is on the second story and the other one is on the third story.
Thank you.
Okay, um.
You know what, I just wanted to add, it looks like there is one dormer, maybe, maybe up to three dormers in the, in the pitch of the roof, so, the attic roof, so I'm assuming that basically from the street, it will look as it did in the original drawings.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, um, there, I'm assuming there are no other speakers on this item?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so uh we can take it into committee then for a decision?
Chair, I, I, I wanna make a motion on this item. I, I did review very carefully the original application uh back in April twenty-twenty-four. Um, vis a vis what's being proposed today. In my view, massing the building does not change in any way. Um, the appearance of the structure, uh, home, uh, build, uh, doesn't change i- in any way from the front. And I believe the platforms that are being requested uh will not negatively impact anyone. Uh, so I'm gonna move that the three variances being requested be authorized and um the, there are no other conditions related to this application, so move approval with no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Uh, is there a second or for Dominic's motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor? Opposed? Oh, okay. Uh, unanimous approval, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, item five, twenty-two Burnham Thorpe Park Boulevard. This is an application to permit a new detached dwelling with an attached garage currently under construction. Uh, there are two variances being requested. They both uh relate to building length. We have two letters of objection and uh no comments from uh city departments. And um Oris Stanowaski, I believe is the agent. And do we have Mr. Stanowaski on? Yes.
Uh, good morning, Chairman Committee. Uh, my name Oris Stanowaski. I'm an agent of this application.
Okay, um, I don't think we need a full presentation. I'm not sure if you want, perhaps you might um take an opportunity to address the two objection letters. Have you seen them?
Uh, yes, I did, sir. Um, uh, I think it's just the way um the variance is written, uh, uh, creates a little bit of confusion. Uh, actually, the building didn't get any longer from previously uploaded roof. It's only the change in the basement uh that happened. Uh, the owner is asking to permit uh the space on their rear deck to be.
So the, the covered, it's really the covered patio in the back, uh, because the length of the um, of the house itself is less than seventeen meters, right?
Uh, yes, exactly. It's only that area that was to be unexcavated that it becomes excavated and has basically no impact.
Perfect. And those are the only two variances that pertain to the length and depth, so.
Uh, yes, correct.
Right. And visually, there's no difference.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No? Uh, no other speakers? No?
Correct, Mr. Chair, no other speakers.
Um, is anyone ready for a motion or any discussion?
Motion?
Mr. Dalton?
Uh, I'll give it a whirl. I'd move a motion for approval. I believe the application meets the four tests and there are no conditions.
Thank you. Is there a second there?
Second?
Um, I think Laura beat you to it.
Oh, no, no problem.
All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Stanowaski. Okay, item six. How we do it for time? Okay. Fifty-seven Enfield Avenue. This is an application to construct a rear one-story addition to the existing dwelling. There are two variances being requested. We have advisory comments from TRCA and Metrolinks and also Ravine and Natural Forest Protection. Um, and there are multiple uh letters of support. Um, no, sorry, there's one letter of support from number twenty-eight. Yeah. Um, okay, and. Uh, okay, so we have another agent who did not register, if I can.
Mr. Chair, not only did they not register, but they did not join the meeting for, in time for me to do a microphone check with them.
Okay.
So uh we might not have them, but they are present, so let's give it a shot here. Aite, go ahead.
What?
Thank you. He's here.
Hello? Oh, hi, hi there.
Hey, good morning. Can we just get your name and uh address for the record?
Yeah, no, I, I think there's another mistake here. My, my name is Etei Joshua. Um, I am the agent for fifty-seven Enfield, but uh might have the wrong agent on file.
Oh, jeez.
No, no, that's, we're doing fifty-seven Enfield. That's who, the agent is just the guy. We're fine, we're correct, he's wrong.
Okay, I heard another name there. Okay, no problem. Um, hi there, my name's Etei Joshua of seventy-nine uh fifty Bathurst Street. I am the agent and designer for this application. Um, we are proposing a fairly respectable uh, single-story rear addition to this um very modest home. Um, as you saw, we have one letter of support. Um, we have already engaged with uh Urban Forestry and have paid the permit fees and have uh no objections to their requirements. Um, there are no trees being uh injured or uh removed with this application. And um, please let me know if you'd like a presentation on the file.
I don't think so.
Okay.
So I, I'm just gonna open it up to questions uh from panel members? No? Okay, so we'll just take it into committee then.
So with that, I'd move a motion for approval. The application's very straightforward, it meets the four tests and there are no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton.
And by the by, they have a cute pooch.
I, I second, I can second that motion.
Thanks, Laura. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous approval. Uh, thank, thank you, thank you, Aite. Okay, next item, uh, item seven, thirty-three Flenden Road. This is an application to construct a new rear yard deck and a second-story rear balcony. A new duplex dwelling is currently under construction. There are three variances being requested. There are no comments from any city departments or neighbors that I know of. Eddie Perez is the agent.
Hello, uh, good, good morning, Chairman and Committee members. My name's Eddie Perez. We're at five thirty-seven Rogers Road. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Good morning, Eddie. Um, I don't think we do, but let's check.
Actually, I do because this did come before me, so one of the previous decisions was mine. So there were a number of con- conditions in um, in that approval and I'm just wondering have all those conditions been met? There wasn't, there were a number of them.
Yeah, the conditions have been met.
Okay, just wanted to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'm assuming there are no other speakers for this one? No?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair, there is not.
Okay, I was just kinda looking at the audience, but it's okay. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Perez? Nope, let's take it into committee then.
Chair, I'm gonna move approval uh with no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gully.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Elderson. All in favor? Okay, unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Perez. Um, are we good for time or?
Mr. Chair, may I submit we do two more and then take a break?
Two more.
Okay.
Perfect.
Perfect. So our next item is um number, item eight, which is twenty-one Pict, Pictkin Crescent. Uh, this is an application to construct a two-story front addition over the existing porch, a partial second-story addition above the existing east side portion of the dwelling and an inter- and interior alterations, which will include a secondary suite in the basement. And having said all of that, there's only one variance being requested. Uh, forestry is requesting a condition of approval regarding a private tree. Uh, Ravine Forest and Natural Forestry Protection has advisory comments. And Mark Rosso is the agent. Mark, are you online?
Yeah, I'm here.
Good morning, sir.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so I'm Mark Rosso, located at uh seven hundred Lawrence Avenue S and I'm the agent for twenty-one Pictin Court. Um, so we're just looking for relief on the front yard setback as it's an existing condition. So we're building on the existing footprint of the dwelling. Um, this is the only variance we have. Uh, we also made our application to uh injure for a tree that's located at the front, which is, if you go to the site plan, you'll be able to see. And um and we've also contacted TRCA, who's given us their approval, which has been provided to the zoning examiner.
Okay, and you've changed from a waiver to a zoning review, so.
Yeah.
I've seen this. Okay. Um, there are no other speakers?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Does anyone have any que- any questions?
I actually do have a question because I'm a little confused because I have Urban Forestry number two and then on another piece of paper, I have no condition.
Well, there's no condition from Ravine, but Forestry has a condition.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Um, anyone else or we, can we take it into committee? Okay. Uh, anyone uh ready for a motion?
Chair, um, the application before us today is an application for variance that is minor, in my view, in nature, meets the four tests. Move approval, subject to Urban Forestry Condition number two.
Thank you, Mr. Gully.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor? Okay, unanimous approval. Thank you to the applicant. And we'll do one more before we take a break. So number nine, uh, ten Puckridge Crescent. This is an application to construct a second-floor addition above the existing dwelling, a two-story rear addition, an attached garage, a new front porch, and a rear yard deck. There are five variances being requested. We have a letter of objection, or I'd say more of a letter of concern um, from the next-door neighbor at number eight. And um I have two people listed as speakers, so I'm not sure who it's going to be.
Mr. Chair, so the speaker, uh, the agent will be Jeff Janson speaking and we also do have Connie uh present in the chambers to potentially speak if they'd like to, but we'll ask them after the agent does their presentation.
Sorry, so we have a area resident in the room?
Correct.
Okay.
Perfect. And then this fellow here at the front is uh early. He's here for the uh one PM session, so we can.
Oh, okay. All right. You're gonna get bored. Okay. Thank you. Um, so let's start with the agent. Jeff?
Hello, good evening. Hello, good afternoon. I was like, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Uh, my name, my name's Jeff Janson. I'm the authorized agent representing the client.
Okay.
Um, so we're asking for uh five minor variances for this protected property. Um, based on uh the meet, the, the four tests, we feel it's minor nature and meets the four tests um, as far as uh planning, uh, as far as the Planning Act. Um, we have had uh no response, I believe, from the city for planning on any concerns at this present time from any emails. So we're thinking that since the town has not responded, uh, we're assuming that there's no issues as far as zoning or planning department having concerns over the minor variances. Uh, we did read through the letter of the one neighbor, I believe is adjacent or next to this particular um dwelling, uh, property. So based on our review, um, you know, lot coverage, again, going back to our minor variances uh for what we're presenting, we're kept, maintain uh a good chunk or a good part of the existing home. So we asking for uh a little bit lot coverage. I, I believe, based on the letter that I reviewed from the neighboring property owner, the only really concern that they really had in the letter, they have made, you know, comments on the minor variances, which they voiced that they had no concerns except one of them, when their, in their letter, um, was to do with height. Um, we're over by point three-eight on the wall height, which I believe is measured from grade to underside of soffit. Um, unfortunately, because we are working with the existing home, um, if you've looked at Streetscape Pictures, existing home is somewhat out of the ground where the basement's partially in the ground, partially out. We're trying to maintain low roof pitches. Um, we're not building eleven-foot-high walls. We're not building twelve-foot walls, you know, typically for a large or an addition. Even a new building in this area, a typical wall height for finished floor. Finished floor to second floor are usually nine or ten-foot ceilings, uh, which we're achieving and usually nine on the second, which is quite common in these areas. Um, like I said, we're not getting into ten, twelve pitches on the roof. Uh, but again, wall height is measured from established grade to underside of soffit. Um, unfortunately, due to the basement slightly elevated ground, it does kinda trigger this minor variance, uh, which is about a foot. Um, if you were to stand probably down the street or cross the road, it'd be very hard to notice that one-foot difference. But again, it is a number measured vertically, um, and it is over by a foot. But again, like I said, we're hoping that committee members will look at the current house. But again, like I said, we're hoping that committee members will look at the current house situation, and based on the house being somewhat elevated out of the ground, which we can't lower the house in the basement any further. Um, again, I'm very, I'm open to any questions that the committee members have. Again, from the letter that I read through the neighbor, property owner, uh number four seemed to be their concern. Uh, the rest, they seem not having any concerns over.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, do we have any questions from panel members? We have another speaker then? Ma'am? Did you wanna come up to say anything, or? If no, we'll move on, but if if you do, please introduce yourself and give us your address.
Hi, Connie Agostino, twenty Antioch Drive. I am the neighbor on the, i- in the back, and uh I own several trees that are, um, uh, my concern is, are we going to protect the forestry surrounding, um, the building and into the other uh residence yards as well? Are we gonna, um, cut them down as I've seen happen over and over again in our neighborhood? So that is one of my um major concerns, is the integrity of the forestry and that it remain intact. The other concern I have is, um, I I I need some clarity. Why is it absolutely necessary to, uh, from what I gather, um, and in my limited understanding of of planning and design, why is it so critical that we widen the footprint of this dwelling? And in doing so, are we setting precedents? And are we going to have an ongoing request with future demands to continue to increase? And by doing so, we're also decreasing an existing person's um property? I'm just curious to under- uh, I'm, I'm interested, not curious, in getting some further clarity on why can we not work with the uh existing bylaws that we have? And um, I mean, we have some wonderful big structures and buildings, um, why is it so necessary to continue to go out? And I'm also now, now I'm curious, there's a buried-in-ground pool on that property. And um, how far out are we going? And what about the uh integrity of um the structure as well, in terms of safety and so forth? Um, I'd like a little bit more clarity on the intended use as well of the building. And um, would there be any possible uh application um for um building code changes under section four fifteen of the municipal building code going forward? Those are my comments for today, and I'd like to thank the chairman and the committee members for allowing me to speak.
Okay, thank you. Don't go away, just in case we have some questions. I just, I I'm gonna let the applicant address most of your issues. I just wanna comment on the widening. They're they're not requesting a variance from either of the side locks, so their widening is within the confines of the existing bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
The rest of it, I will leave to the agents to uh to answer for you.
And at what point, and uh I I apologize if the information was submitted and I wasn't able to put my fingers on it, but at what point would um the neighbors have an opportunity to look at the facade and the, a design and the, and what it would look like?
It's online now, actually.
It, it, I, it is, okay. All right.
But that may change, because at this point, they're only getting approved for their variances, should we approve them. Um, so their design may change, but their overall.
It it is online, okay, 'cause I I thought, I thought I did, yeah.
There you go.
Oh, there it is, okay. Oh, and it's sideways, that's great. Ah, all right. Okay.
But if you head over to the Application Information Center, you could download it from there.
It's in, okay.
When the AIC is working, it's currently under maintenance.
Yeah, I was able to get um most of the documentation and some I couldn't uh get to come up, but I appreciate the uh clarification. Thank you.
Okay, I'll come back to the agent for rebuttal.
Yes, um, obviously, when you do a rebuild at a existing neighborhood, obviously, there's concerns of the uh adjoining residence, which we do take in consideration as well when we design uh additions, rentals, or new builds. Um, presently, uh, based on the regional survey, and again, quote me, I could be wrong, but we have no in-ground pool in the rear yard. There's a lot of planters, uh landscape planters built in the backyard, which will be removed, which are planters. Uh, as far as our best of knowledge dealing with our client, there will be no tree removal. Uh, there is a tree at the front that's being protected by hoarding, but uh from my recollection of dealing with the homeowner, that no trees near rear rear yard will be removed. Um, based on our process of moving forward, the city comment may come back and ask for hoarding along the rear of the property if there's trees um along the lot line, which is quite common, which, you know, we would have no problem with the city on. As far as, um, like you mentioned before, our side yards, we're not requesting a minor variance. Uh, so we have uh the smaller side yard on the right-hand side of the property, and the left side is two-point-two-six meters, which is quite ample for a a side yard. Um, as far as massing, building size, um, we're working with the constraints of the existing bungalow footprint. Um, so our overall building length is actually, when you look at it compared to the neighbor on the left, is actually shorter in length of overall building, and slightly longer from the house to the right. Um, so we're not encroaching into uh the rear yard as much as maybe people think, uh, when they see a two-story home. So we are working with the constraints of that as well. Um, I think overall, based on the variances that we requested, um, I I think they're all minor. Again, and I I uh, if, again, if if the public has more questions or concerns, we're very open, but I think, um, based off what you can, what's presented, and what we're working with, the constraints of the existing home, we're not, you know, encroaching into the rear yard. The only encroachment to the rear yard, sorry, I do apologize for that, is the covered rear porch, um, which is one-story, and it's just amenity space to sit outside. Uh, if it's a rainy day, have a barbecue, uh, that'd be the only projection beyond the existing bungalow rear wall, which is about three-point-zero-five meters, which is le- approximately ten feet, and the width of it is approximately about ten to twelve feet as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any other questions from panel members? No? Okay, and uh there's no one else? Oh, there was no one else. Um, we'll take it into committee? Any discussion? Are we ready for a motion?
I'm happy to make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson.
Aren't any more questions? Um, I believe this uh application at ten Puckridge meets the four tests under the Planning Act and move for approval uh with no conditions.
Don't see any, thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor? That's unanimous approval. Uh, thank you to the presenters. We're gonna take a ten-minute break? So we'll back at ten-fifty?
Ten-fifty, sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Is here she in this?
December, yes.
No.
Because past December.
No.
This again.
No.
So. Or December.
What was that?
December. Um, two boys will be December. I think you know. Okay, yeah, okay, okay.
Would you know this boy?
This boy, yeah.
Oh, two boys. Wow.
Yeah.
Two Sagittarius.
Yes. And Sag, yeah.
Right.
That's.
And that's.
Who am I? No, but it's been a young.
They're told.
Yeah, yeah. We have to build up December. Two and a half, so look, first three. Three, right, three. Yes. So. So we'll see, it says the sixth. Yeah. Just hope the sixth and Yedlin is. Okay, so we'll see, yeah, we'll see. We'll get. Yeah, so. So on Yedlin, it's just seven. If all of this is only there, all of the. You know, it's way more than that. This is true. Not it. It's not, it's not the. It's, you know, um, maybe it's hard. I know. So December. Eight, we need to start everything out. And it gets ever. Eight, it's worth. Uh, at the time, it's. Right, so you have eight, yeah. Keep it clear, yeah. Then I'll be saying. But yeah, because like.
December.
It's twenty. Yeah. It's. It's. So. Nice. Well, for sure, yeah. I'm so excited, and he's excited. No, he's not so excited. Brother.
He's good.
Yeah. Yeah. Do you know where speaking? I'm worried about what to do. See, he needs like. Cause it's like I'm gonna share my points like. So. Okay, yeah, come on. I'm sure my toys, your eggs are. Wonderful. It's so good. Yeah, so we'll see. I would say I need to see two little boys run around the house. Like, I feel like that's.
First time.
Wild. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, yeah, I'm so excited. This one's three. This one's so small, so. Actually, it's. Yeah. Up again. And, uh, but we got two boys. So. These are. Yeah. So. But, yeah.
That's what you do.
Okay. Yeah, start saving, start saving, yeah. Start saving, yeah.
Stormy, yes, we're.
Yeah. Yeah, we do. Oh, yeah. So same.
Two years apart, second one is just starting.
Yeah. Yeah. I have had. Pass. Twilight. W here. W. Yeah.
I saw. Oh, for the edition, that's right.
Yeah. Twits, twits, yeah. Yeah. Not even a dream, yeah.
That's not like.
Oh.
Have you ever seen a carriage? Three.
Five, ten. For that.
Oh, in that.
Okay.
Perfect.
Oh, yeah. 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 We don't have. It's. Ah. I read. So. Anyway, so. It's like grocery stores, it wasn't like their. In turn. We're just. Yeah. Yeah. It's just. Yeah. Some of our study books are.
No, I'm a record. I'm a record. I'm just.
Okay. You know.
Now we're.
Ha ha.
I wait.
Some. That's right. Yes. You have a problem? Yes. I've worked around for years.
I usually do that. So we need to work. That's your equipment. And.
Oh, how long?
That's great.
Oh, that's right. Um.
No, um, we.
Oh.
And, um.
How many?
There's been. Yes. And, um. What if.
Of course, of course, that's. Of course, it's. 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 Yeah. Um.
There are others, um. Walking.
Yeah.
Oh, three. Both. There. Josh. It's possible.
I don't know. Still, I think. I mean, um. And. So it's. Right, I keep. So the. I mean. Yes. But. It's. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. It's. Shit. Maybe that's why. Right. So you're saying. So. You only. There's still things. Just as well. Yeah. Here.
So. I'm like, I really think they are. I heard. Yeah. There. There's. Um. Most everything. That. There's. There's.
Yeah.
But, yeah. So.
As, as I said. The words.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd say, uh, members, I think we're close enough to ten fifty to get started here.
Official.
The power's gone.
Yeah. That's Laura's fault. Okay, we'll get everyone back online first. Okay, welcome back. Uh, thank you for the indulgence of the ten minute break. We're on to item ten. Um, this is fifteen Mahoney Avenue. It is an application for consent. Sorry. Oops, wrong page. This is an application to construct a new townhouse, um, three times over. The new townhouses will be, um, a total of three residential units each. Uh, there is one variance in that no parking will be provided on any of the townhouses. Uh, forestry is requesting condition three in the event of approval. Metro Links has advisory comments. And I just wanna get a clarification on the variance itself because it's a little misleading. It wasn't clear to me whether only one parking spot was required per townhouse or three parking spots. And I believe it's three parking spots. And I see the agent is here, um, in front of us. Uh, Rocheen, welcome. Oops.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and fellow committee members. My name's Rochean Tharum. I'm a planner at Design Plan Services located at eighty-seven Skyway Avenue, Suite two hundred in Toronto.
So before we start, if we could just clarify, um, it would be three spots per townhouse that would, that is required by bylaw.
That's correct.
So essentially, uh, nine spaces in total would be required and you're proposing zero.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Um, so within that context, if you could please do us a presentation.
For sure. Uh, so since the twenty twenty-three minor variance approvals, our client has revised their proposal to better reflect the current market trends. Uh, the proposal is to still construct a townhouse on each lot. However, as you noted, Mr. Chair, there will be three dwelling units within each townhouse. Um, each of the townhouse units will have two bedroom units. Um, and the lots will still be created through the same part lot control exemption application, um, since, uh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, planning staff have confirmed that they have no concerns and our client has also reviewed the urban forestry can memo and they have, uh, no, no, um, issues with the recommended conditions. And our client has reviewed the Metro Links, uh, conditions and, um, they have requested that those conditions, uh, not be imposed at this time. And in terms of the proposed variances, the subject property is zoned under the former York zoning bylaw one dash eighty-three. And as you noted, the first variance is, uh, pertains, does pertain to parking. And although the property is not zoned under the former, um, is zoned under the former York zoning bylaw, um, the current citywide zoning bylaw has already eliminated minimum parking requirements for residential units. And this reflects the city's objective of reducing automobile dependency. I would note that the property is well-served by transit. There are TTC bus stops along Weston Road and Jane Street, which are a one to two minute walk from the subject property. And Weston Ghost Station and Mount Dennis LRT are about a twenty-minute walk from the subject property. So in my opinion, providing no par- parking in this context is appropriate, given the existing public transportation options within the immediate and broader area. And it also aligns with the current objectives the city has, which is to reduce automobile dependency. In terms of variance two, this variance only pertains to part three, um, which but.
Yes, there's variance two?
Uh, for part three.
Oh, okay. Okay, got it.
Yeah. So this, this only variance pertains to part three, which but seventeen Mahoney Avenue to the east. And the proposed side yard setback is point nine meters, whereas two point five meters is required. In our opinion, uh, the proposed point nine meter setback provides sufficient access to rear yard and space for stormwater infiltration, um, maintains an appropriate separation distance from seventeen Mahoney Avenue. And I would note that seventeen Mahoney Avenue does have a point eight eight meter west side yard setback. And it is consistent with existing side yard setbacks along Mahoney Avenue and in the surrounding area. Overall, when compared to the previous approval, uh, this, uh, proposal adds additional dwelling units on the subject property while lowering the overall height from twelve point eight meters to ten point one meters and reducing the number of stories, uh, from three to two when perceived from the street. Based on the justification, it's my opinion that, uh, the proposal meets the four tests under section forty-five one of the Planning Act and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I do have a few questions, uh, to start with. Um, has the part lot exemption been granted or is that still in process?
Through you, Mr. Chair, uh, that, that is still in process.
Okay. And is this an area that a- allows on-street overnight permit parking?
Uh, from my understanding, uh, there, there are, that, that is an option as well.
So this is the old city of York, it's not city of Etobicoke and in New York, I believe, overnight parking was permitted.
That's from my, that's my understanding, Mr. Chair, and as you know, uh, regardless, there would need to be a permit, uh, obtained from transportation staff.
Okay, but, um, and y- you don't know whether they're at capacity or whether, um, uh, since you're not sure whether it's even there.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, I don't have that, uh, information as right now.
Okay, and is there any reason why your client did not try to at least provide one parking spot per townhouse in the front?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, it's just due to the design. Um, and there are active and public transportation options within the neighborhood.
Oh, I understand that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the extent of, uh, my questions, thank you. Mr. Golly?
Uh, just a couple of questions. Uh, thank you so much for your presentation. Um, these will be independent, uh, health units, right?
That's correct.
And, uh, are you aware of any reports from Transportation Services with respect to the proposal?
At this moment, no.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Agent, uh, you mentioned in your submissions that your client or you have spoken with planning. Uh, I don't see a planning report, am I, unless I'm missing something. Um, so are you reporting to us conversations or, or what was your submission on that? If you could clarify planning's, uh, position?
Yes, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, we have been working with planning staff since the part lot control exemption was submitted back in twenty twenty-three. Uh, they did not have any concerns with these applications as well. Yeah, so it was just a conversation with them.
It's a conversation, you didn't receive a report or anything.
That's correct, yeah, no, no report.
Okay, um, any other questions? Um, there are no other speakers, I'm assuming?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
By the way, I, I just wanted to add that I did confirm in fact that it is a fifteen-minute walk, uh, from that property to the Eglington LRT, should it ever open?
Yeah.
Sit down.
Yeah, one day. Um, and just, just to come back to some questions, so you, you, you really have no, um, justifications or sort of parking alternatives to present to us in terms of what, uh, public parking is available in the area? Um, you're assuming that there is on-street parking permitted, uh, but beyond that, you don't have any information on that?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, that is correct. There, there is no parking proposed on the property. Um, however, as you know, the city is looking to, uh, reduce automobile dependency, right? So, um, that is why there is no parking proposed.
Is there any bicycle parking proposed?
No.
No. Which is the standard alternative to no car parking. Um, and you, you're not aware of it, there are any green pea lots or anything like that in this area?
Not within the close vicinity of, uh, the subject property.
Okay.
Actually, I can, I can tell you that there is a green pea parking lot just north of, uh, Weston Road in Eglington.
Yeah.
So about a, I would say about a thirteen, thirteen-minute walk.
Walk, okay.
Roughly.
Yeah, and then again, it.
Close to the station. For now.
Yeah, and, and then, you know, my next question then would have, would be, uh, are there monthly permits available on that green pea lot? But we're, we're not even getting to that, so, okay. All right. Um, are there any other questions? No? Okay, thank you. Uh, I guess we'll take it into committee for discussion.
So, Chair, um, to me, it appears as though, um, this proposal, uh, is not providing parking, uh, whatsoever. Uh, in the fact that it's, uh, in the same vein as council's, uh, desire to reduce, uh, car ownership and, uh, make mobility, other mobility, uh, alternatives almost imperative. Um, these will be totally independent units. I think what will apply here is that buyer beware, they're buying the units. Uh, hopefully, they'll ask the right questions. Um, is there any parking? No, the properties don't provide any parking. Uh, so it's up to you to prov- to find parking. Uh, whether or not a purchase, per, per, sale and purchase agreement would actually state that no parking is being provided, um, really doesn't concern me or this committee, I believe. Um, in terms of providing parking in the front yard, um, I don't think, uh, in this type of urban form that we're trying to create close to major arterial roads, close to principal roads with good transit, uh, surface transit and also close to higher order transit, I think this is very viable type of development. I'd rather see the, as a transportation person too, I'd rather see, uh, front yard, uh, landscaping, uh, than parking, uh, in front of all of those three units that are being proposed. Um, so that's my view on the issue of parking. Um, it's, uh, hopefully buyer beware, they'll have to find their own parking.
Thank you, Mr. Golly.
I, I will add, though, that this, uh, this particular area is a bit of a food desert. So for grocery shopping, it, it won't be easy, so it will be a buyer beware situation.
Yeah, in other words, most people drive to get their groceries.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, I, I just wanna make some comments as well. I believe it's a very appropriate location for, um, three townhouses, um, three triplex townhouses as well. I, I still do have concerns about parking. Um, nonetheless, yes, there is a citywide bylaw, but nonetheless, it does not apply to, uh, to this particular location. We are being asked, um, for a variance because it, this area is still covered by the old bylaw. And we have to decide whether that variance is minor or not. And we're essentially being asked to go from nine to zero. And in my opinion, that's not minor. Um, I think if this area, if this proposal were in Etobicoke, where no on-street parking is permitted, um, I would definitely be voting against this application. But given that on-street parking is permitted, I'm a little bit torn on it. Anyway, those are my comments.
And I can care, is that, I just, uh, I, I know public transit is, you know, although I, I would add, like to add that, you know, think, I don't think a bus route really is. It's certainly not higher order transit, but, uh, fifteen-minute walk is a, is a, is a lot actually to ask of somebody, uh, especially in the winter months, so, I don't know. I, I, and I'm worried about groceries because there, there is no immediate, uh, grocery store close by. I, I am almost of, I, I'm almost thinking that it would be great if they had one car parking.
At least something.
Yeah, just one car parking in front of the town. I like this, by the way, I like this proposal a lot. I, you know, I think there's a lot of merit in it. I just, I do worry that even though it is, we are supposed to be relying on, less on the automobile and more on public transit, that this is not a very transit-friendly neighborhood.
Yet.
It will change, I know that it will change, but still, a fifteen-minute walk in the wintertime is, it's a lot to ask from somebody, I think, yeah, anyway. It's all.
Thank you. Um, I, I'm gonna ask you to take a seat now because we're kind of in the deliberation portion, so thank you for your presentation, unless anyone has any other questions? No? Okay. So, um, I think we've heard the comments, um, if anyone, unless anyone else has anything to say or if anyone's ready for a motion. Again, we're not being asked for severance here, that's being done through, um, directly through city council, through part lot control. So I guess to summarize, I mean, good proposal, concerns around the parking and the extent of the parking, so.
And the distance to the station.
For sure. I, I, I'm a little bit disappointed too in that, uh, the applicant, you know, w- did not come forward with evidence for parking alternatives. Um, I think we kind of figured it out on our own, but it really wasn't presented to us. Anyway. If anyone's ready for motion, please do so, if not, um, I'll, I'll move one.
Also, Chair, I, I am gonna risk here and I know that, uh, this is a difficult application for, for us to deal with, particularly since we're looking for nine parking spaces and none are being provided. Um, but in my view, uh, this is a good project. Uh, this is the type of project that's very close to a principal road. Um, there is good transit, in my view, accessibility to transit. Uh, there are shops not too far, not within walking distance, but for, uh, older folks, but certainly, yeah, there are grocery stores just to the north. Um, and, 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 and it's circuitous to get to them, even, uh, at Trafalgar, uh, where you've got a Freshco and you've got a Tim Hortons and you've got other facilities. Normally, uh, I'd be the one who'd be, um, snapping my free feet and asking for the parking. In this case, I feel that this is a good proposal. Uh, it's the type of proposal that will attract, uh, uh, new families that in, that want to be, uh, dependent on other forms of mobility other than, uh, the automobile. Uh, they're gonna be depending on, uh, transit, they'll be depending on bicycle facilities and bicycle, uh, accessibility. They're gonna be depending on transit, they'll be depending on bicycle facilities and bicycle accessibility. So I'm gonna move approval with condition number three. For all three, by the way.
Forestry condition three.
Yeah, part one, part two, part three, with urban forestry condition number three.
Thank you, Mr. Gully, so that's approval with Cash and Lou condition for, from forestry.
Mr. Chair, I would like to, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, okay.
If you're ready. I'm, I'm prepared to second that motion. I not only echo the comments of my colleague, but the, 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 the notion of buyer beware, caveat emptor, comes into play here. Any family or individual that's looking to purchase this, I suggest, should make themselves aware of the circumstances, and if they're prepared to deal with no parking and use public transit, then this is the, this might be the site for them. So I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. So we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, the motion is carried, the application is approved.
Sorry, was someone opposed?
We're sitting on the fence.
I'm sitting on the fence.
Well, we need to know.
You need to know. Let's do it unanimously, that's fine. Okay. Next, item eleven. So item eleven is fifteen College Street. This is an application to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are five variances being requested. Forestry is requesting condition two for a private tree. There is a support petition on file and there is an arborist report on file. And our speaker, need to go to my other list.
Hey, good morning. My name is Sayeed Harun Sen.
Good morning.
Sorry?
Good morning. Can we get your address as well, please?
Yes, good morning. My address is five four zero three Langford Road, Burlington. I'm the applicant of this application.
Thank you, sir. I don't think we need a, a presentation here, if you're open to us just asking you questions.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. So, panel members, do we have any questions for the applicant? No? Let me get caught up on the agenda. Okay, if there are no questions, then is someone ready for a motion?
Sure. With that, I believe the application is very straightforward, it meets the four tests, so I move a motion for approval, subject two, tree protection, condition number two.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Is there a seconder?
I'll second that motion.
Laura, thank you, all in favor. That's unanimous approval. Thank you, sir. Item number twelve, five seventy-one Rogers Road. This is an application to construct a second story addition above the existing dwelling. The altered dwelling will become a fourplex. There are three variances being requested. Transportation has conditions, is requesting conditions in the event of approval. Metro Links has advisory comments. We have an objection letter from the property next door, or sorry, to the rear. No, next. And that's, I believe, all we have. Variance two, there's a correction in the additional materials. So there's a bit of a, in the, just a revisal of the purpose. And speaker is Mr. Eddie Perez. Eddie, welcome back.
Hello, good afternoon again. I'm here on behalf of the owners, Eddie Perez of five thirty-seven Rogers Road. I, I did see the comment from Transportation, but we would like that it, that it not be imposed on this project because I, if you can put up the bird's eye view of the picture I sent, along the whole laneway, there are a lot of structures that are right against the laneway. Like, there's one, the, the main strips on that area, and then there's, on Keel, there's a medical auto repair, which is right on the laneway, there's a mission church, which is also twenty centimeters from the laneway. Also, right across, there was a garage that was proved about five years ago or so, which is only forty centimeters away. Like, imposing this on just this one property, to me, doesn't make any sense. You can also look at the other part of the laneway, where, where you go into the laneway, where it's on tar, tarial heating and sheet metal. I've been in this area for forty years and that's always been there. And I don't see them widening the laneway there as well. So I feel that imposing that condition, to me, doesn't make any sense whatsoever. And, and we need that extra space at this point to park the car because we don't have a lot of room. That's the one parking that my client has. So if, if, I'm okay with the, if you can not impose that on us, because I feel that doesn't meet what we're asking for in this area.
Okay. I'm gonna come back to that with a question to you, but if you want to use the rest of your time to perhaps address some of the issues that were raised by the property next door?
The property next door, our, on our property, we have a twenty centimeters, and we're going directly up. And we're not encroaching whatsoever onto the neighbor's property. And during construction, we can deal with the neighbors and meet any concerns that they have.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to add before we ask the other speaker to come on?
Yeah, like I said, I feel that this project is suitable for this area. And there's, like you said, there's traffic on Rogers Road, and the LRT hopefully is coming soon as well. So Transportation should be good for this area, and I feel that this is a good project for this specific area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I have one question for you. There's no west side site setback being required, requested, requested here, so do you comply with the bylaw with regards to this west side setback?
Yes, we do.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Did your client ever approach the person in opposition about possibly assembling the property and making for a better application all round?
No, no, he didn't approach for that, no.
That's too bad, because, you know, I think it would have made for a better op, actually, even assembling five, six, seven. There's three, three buildings there that would make a great proposal. Anyway, just putting it out there.
Yeah, sure. Okay, any other questions? If not, I believe we have another speaker? Thanks, well. Kamela?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good, good morning. Let's hear what you got to say.
Okay, as, I have one correction to make on my objection.
We just need you to state your name and address first.
Okay, my name is Kamela, last name Deepat Nath. I live at one twenty-eight Rosemont Avenue, but I'm the owner of five sixty-nine Rogers Road. That helps?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, so first of all, I have a correction to make, it will not be encroaching on my property line. The concerns that I have outlined here, it's not sufficient space in between both properties. It will affect my property to some point if I have to do any repairs or maintenance on the west side of my wall. And basically, that the ten-foot wall will really create an impact on me if I have to do any exterior work on the west side. So my question to you guys, how are we going to address this? Because it's actually overlapping on the, my house, the, if you notice the pictures, you will see everything is overlapping. That's why I sent pictures, so then we could deal with this thing appropriately.
Is it overlapping because you're encroaching onto his property?
We're not sure what is going on there, this is why I'm suggesting if someone could come out and really have a look at that.
Well, do you have a survey of your property?
I do have a survey of my property, yes.
Does it incl, does it indicate any encroachments?
Nope, it does not. This is why I said the encroachment is false. If you look at the pictures in the rear, you will see what I'm speaking about. And I don't have a clue what that is all about.
Okay, well, the applicant has provided a survey, and it's not showing any encroachments, so.
This is why I said that error, I had to remove that, I'm sorry about that. That was a misinterpretation on my part, so I removed that encroachment.
So it's a mystery as to why the two touch?
That's right, because if you notice the back, the eavesdrop is actually touching my wall. And then if you, you look above again, you will see that the roof is actually over there, his, his roof is on the mine. So if he goes up with a ten-foot wall, that may run into my eavesdrop and my building. But you guys are the better judge of this, so you will have to tell me.
Well, we can't judge if we don't have your survey, but we can only judge by what we have in front of us.
What do you have in front of, for you? Is it possible for me to send you a copy of the survey at any given time?
It would have been helpful bef, prior to today, but. Okay, do, you still have a little bit of time, so is there anything else you want to state before we get Eddie to come back?
Those are my only main concerns, because if I have to do any work on my property on that west side, I will not be able to do it if you put up a ten-foot wall, so that wouldn't cause me a bit of, um, how should I say? I would not be able to do any work on that portion of my house, including six in the eavesdrop or anything there.
No, understood. I think Laura would be tempted to ask you if you're interested in selling to the neighbor.
I've got that question repeatedly, that is why all the other owners sold. They wanted to buy me out.
Yeah, well, it would lead to a much better income for, sorry, outcome for both of you if, if you did, but anyway. That's your business, not mine.
No, I understand what you're saying there.
Okay. If do you have nothing else to say, I'm gonna come back to Mr. Perez and see if he has any answers to your questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Eddie?
Yeah, I, I was listening to what the lady had to say. As you can see on that picture there, we have an eavesdrop now. If you put on the elevation that we did for the drawings for the proposal, there's not gonna be any more gutter or fascia, we're going straight up and straight wall. So we're not gonna have that projection that's showing on that picture anymore, so there, there won't be any gutter at the second floor, the water won't be drained on that side. And we're actually improving what's there at the present time.
What is the setback requirement, if any, on that side?
Well, you're allowed to go in line with the existing house.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Yeah.
So you're basically going to improve that situation because that overhang will, will cease to exist, cease to exist, sorry.
That's correct.
And to be clear, then, you're just maintaining the existing wall and going up, correct?
That's correct.
Correct, thank you.
Okay. What else did I have here? You're okay with, oh, and so I think the major issue here is the conveyance for the laneway. So you're saying that if that conveyance is done, you're not gonna have a parking spot left?
Yeah, if you put up the bird's eye view, you can see what I, I'm talking about. Right beside his property, there's a, a line of buildings that right on the property line, so to me, it doesn't make any sense conveying that lot. Like, what is that, two and a half feet, it's not gonna improve anything, because this won't be conveyed for probably, who knows how long?
It'll be conveyed right away, it just won't be used.
I mean, won't be used, that's what I mean. If you look at all those structures there, and I have the other picture that shows better on the corner with the lot, Ontario Heating as well. It, it doesn't make any sense doing it there. If you look at there, it's just a curve there, it doesn't go anywhere.
Well, have you Have you had any discussions with Tabassam regarding this?
I spoke to the, the, one of the lady planners there at the Transportation, and I explained my point of view. She just had to, to speak my sense at the committee, so that's what I'm doing. To me, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't make any sense, anyway. But you guys can make your, your decision as well.
So, the conveyance, just to make it clear, would follow that same curve, they're not asking to square that off, right? Curve, obviously.
Yeah, it, it would follow that same curve, correct, and then it would hit that building.
Yeah, no, I, I get it, yeah.
Yeah. And then it's all at the owner's cost, right? They gotta get conveyance.
It's part of a fifty-year plan.
Reference plan.
Okay. Currently? Mr. Gully would like to know whether you have two units or, or one in your current dwelling?
It's, current dwelling has two units.
Two units, okay. I mean, this is a great location for a fourplex, so, you know, we'd like to see this work, it's just a little awkward.
Even a sixplex.
Yeah. Well, fourplex is allowed right now, as of right, so. I don't know. I, I, I'm not sure how to deal with the transportation condition, but frankly.
Well, I was gonna say, if, you know, if, even if we impose that condition, you can just go back into them and have further discussions with them and see if you can come to some other agreement.
But if we impose that condition, is that going to create other variances now?
Well, that's what I'm saying, then, if we
No, but if it creates other variances, then this hearing will have been a waste of time for, for the applicant. Anyway. Let's take it in for discussion. I'm assuming there's no one else to speak on this, so.
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
So Chairman, I did want to make some comments amongst ourselves. Again, we have an official document at the city called a road classification plan, and that road classification plan identifies the minimum right-of-way requirements for every road in the city. And it's imperative that we apply the widening requirements when an application comes in. And it's imperative that we do it over time. You, you pick, you pick up these pieces as you go along over three, four, ten, fifteen, twenty years. And it makes a lot of sense, that's the way you, you're ever gonna widen the road or the right-of-way short of expropriation. In this case here, I'm not gonna promote the widening of this lane, the right-of-way of this lane, in this particular instance, because if you look, this lane does connect with another road. It does connect to Hillary Avenue. But the fact of the matter is that on the east side, there are so many buildings right up to the property lines. And the idea that you might be able to get these windings in the next forty years, unless somebody comes in and develops the whole block, it's not there. So I don't think it's a rational condition to impose on this application.
Fair enough. I'm just looking at the survey as well, and I also see that there's indications of reciprocal rights-of-way that are right next to that bend. right-of-way that are right next to that bend. If we could come out of committee for a minute, I would be curious to know who has those two rights-of-way. I'm assuming it's the two adjacent properties, one which is a subject property and the other one, I'm assuming, is on Keel Street. Mr. Perez, are you aware of that, or do you know what's going on there?
Well, I'm not sure what's going on there, to be honest, but they also gave the laneway on that corner, they also built a garage five years ago or so, and they didn't impose the 1.67 meter on them. They're like 40 centimeters. But as of that, what your question you're asking me, I don't know.
Okay, because I'm gonna assume that's there to ensure access for both properties from the curve? Like, that would be the logical purpose of that? Mr. Gully, I don't know if you have an opinion on that? The survey? So you can see the triangle that's created to the left of the...
Indeed, I would interpret in the same manner. That's shared. That triangle will be shared by a couple of properties.
So because that's already in place and imposed on title, that keeps that corner clear in any case, whether it's widened or not? I would think. So what was the other condition from transportation now? Oh, identifying that, okay. So that's... one is related to the other. Okay. So, I mean, I take some comfort from seeing that reciprocal right-of-way there. Comfort in the sense that if we do not impose that condition... So do we have any other comments, or is someone ready for a motion?
So Chair, I'm prepared to speak on this item. I believe that planning implies that we're looking at future conditions and ensure that we're protecting those future conditions that are desirable in the official plan and the transportation master plan, et cetera. And same with the official plan, the line uses. I believe that the three variances that are being requested here in this particular location, in this particular urban form, are appropriate, and I believe that they should be approved. They do meet the four conditions. It's desirable to do this. With respect to the transportation requests, as I had indicated previously, I believe that a request to widen the lane at this time is not, in my view, appropriate. So I'm gonna move approval of the three variances with no conditions. I don't believe there are any forestry conditions here. We just had a Metro Links advisory.
There is no access there.
So move with no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a secondary for Dominic's motion? No?
Yes, I will second that.
Okay. Thank you, Natalia. All in favor of the approval? Opposed? Okay, it's a three to two split decision on the approval. Thank you to everyone. Sorry, and that was no... yeah, so the transportation condition was not imposed. Okay. Item 13, 19 Dunning Crescent. This is an application to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are four variances being requested. This is where Michael is the speaker, not at the previous one. Anyway, confusion hopefully gets resolved. Michael, are you online?
Yeah, I'm here. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Good afternoon.
My name is Michael Purger, and my address is 768 Mary Street North, and I am the agent for the homeowners at 19 Dunning Crescent.
Thank you. I don't think we need an... sort of a presentation on this one. If you're open just to us asking questions, I think your application's quite straightforward.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So committee members, any questions? No? Hearing none. Is anyone ready for a motion?
I am, if no one has any questions. I believe this application at 19 Dunning Crescent meets the four tests under the Planning Act and move for approval with no conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. Is there a secondary?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor? Okay, unanimous approval. Okay, moving on to item 14, 31 McManus Road. This is an application to construct a one-story west-side addition and a new front porch. There are four variances being requested. Variance two has been corrected in the additional materials. TRCA is providing a report that they are okay with this application, and Ravina Natural Forestry Protection has advisory comments only. Our speaker is Rick Bongers.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Rick Bongers, address... hi. Address 75 Redwood Avenue, Cambridge, Ontario.
Okay. I don't think we need a presentation on this, if you're open to just us asking questions.
Sure.
Super. Committee members, any questions?
Just that you're okay with the TRCA report that says that a permit is required?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll go through all necessary approvals.
Yeah, I should have noted that as advisory comments, sorry.
If no one has any questions, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Sure.
To do with 31 McManus Road, the four variances, I believe they meet the four tests under the Planning Act and move for approval with no conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. Is there a secondary?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Pavel. All in favor? Unanimous approval. Thank you, Mr. Bongers.
Thank you.
Item... oh, that's it. Okay, that's it for the morning session, right on... actually, a little bit ahead of time, wow. Yeah, that's the first that I can recall. Back at 1 o'clock. Thank you.